This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:45 PM. I'm very pleased that you've taken time to join us this evening. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operations of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public. As our guest, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capabilities. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We've established a quorum and I will call roll. Mr. LaFoyle.
Present.
Ms. Canoyer.
Present.
Mr. Mises.
Present.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Pichol.
Present.
And I'm Melinda Salinas and we also have Dr. Carl Montoya.
Present.
And we will move on to item number two, fiscal year 2018 budget discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Elizondo to continue.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, we'll get started in just a moment. I have a little bit of technical difficulties. Well, while they're doing that, I was debating whether or not to mention this, but as some of y'all know that I have been a little bit under the weather lately, so I don't feel very well tonight. So at some point, I may ask Nicole Dean if y'all, can you stand for a second, Nicole? She's our Director of Accounting, so if I need a little bit of assistance with a presentation, she may come up and help me a little bit. Okay, I think we're ready. Just need the lights and we can get going. There you go. Thank you. All right, so tonight, we are not going to adopt a budget because originally that's what the plan was for tonight, but things changed. So we're going to just, it's going to be another budget workshop or session with the board so we can review, continue to review the budget that we prepared and we can get some feedback from the board members as to what the board would like us to do so that on Monday, when the next board meeting is to adopt the budget, we can have everything finalized for the board at that time so we can be ready to move forward with the adoption. So the first thing I'm going to do is cover the general operating fund. And I'm just going to, I'm not going to go through this, if y'all don't mind, in as much detail as I did last time. I'm just going to go through some of the changes that I've made since the last time we met. So that estimated taxable value, we've adjusted that number up a little bit, about $100 million because, the first number, the 8.8 million, because the Barrett County Appraisal District has given us some more information, they up some more current updated information. So we've adjusted those numbers as we feel comfortable to get to the right, you know, getting closer to a true, real number as to what we're going to be able to collect taxes on. The other number is you go a little further down, the estimated ADA. We had a number there, as I mentioned earlier during the public hearing, that we were estimating 22,000, I think 22,100 actually. And based on what's happening, what happened in 2016-17, that we are seeing our ADA continue to decline. Last year, that number was 21,500 and change. So we're, in the year prior to that, we actually, from the year prior to that, we declined about 600, 5 or 680 ADA. So we've had some pretty substantial decreases in ADA. So we're going to have to really start monitoring that more on a monthly basis than we do now because we need to determine where these kiddos are going. And whenever the students are leaving, if there's enough students leaving at one point, we're going to have to do something about some of the employees that work for us in those areas probably to go ahead and see if we can adjust if there's a need somewhere else in another school where we can transfer them or something. We're going to have to just monitor that a little bit more closely because it's, it really is starting to get more concerning. We thought we were going to have a one-year decrease, but it's continuing. According to demographers, their data said it might continue another year or two before it starts to increase, but we'll have to monitor to see what actually happens and not based on just what the demographers are saying. On this particular slide, in the local revenue, the change here was really on that first line for the current year taxes. We increased it a little bit and that was because we changed the taxable value that I showed you a minute ago, that $8 billion number. So it gave us a little bit more money there. So now, in total, when we look at total local revenue, we're at about $94 million was what we're anticipating for next year. The majority of it, again, is the tax revenues. I'm going to go through it, please, stop me if you have any questions. Sorry. Okay. On the state revenue, what happened here because we had a decrease in the ADA, the state revenue decreases. So again, most of the way that they funded is based on ADA or one of the primary ways. So our regular amount up there, you can see now that, I mean, we had a decrease before, but we've had a pretty significant decrease now to $4.5 million. So state revenue, last time we presented this, the state revenue was about, instead of $81.4 million, and you have that, the difference of 8.3 million, that number was more like $4 million last time we spoke. But because of the significant loss in ADA, we lost another $4 million because of that decrease. So it's very, very important when you lose that many kids, it's going to really impact the school district. So total revenue that we're looking at for next year is about $90.1 million, $90.2 million. When we look at the federal revenue, there was no change from the last time. We're still thinking it's going to be about $3.5 million. When we look at the expenditure side, this is where we start having a little bit more in-depth discussion. That first number you see up there for the salaries and benefits, again, that's the number that was, that's the number that, for the audience, that was down here, the $154 million from the prior year, that 154.9. That number just carries forward to the top and then we add whatever adjustments we made during the year for new personnel. So that's why you see that 155.6 as a starting number. The next number beneath that, where it talks about $1.9 million, that, and we're going to talk about that in a little more detail in a minute, but that, the majority of those are the staff members for Veterans Memorial High School. There are a few new positions that are being requested and some reclassifications. And again, we'll look at those in a little more detail in a minute so you can, and it was in your board information as well, in board book. It showed you a listing of all the different positions that were being requested and had dollar values and everything on there and where they were going and what they were going to be doing. Then a little further down, when you look at that $1.8 million, that's the retention incentive that the board approved back in November of 2016. And so the subtotal there for the salaries is $159.4 million. The operating budgets for all the departments and campuses is at $28.7 million and that's, again, paying for everything from utility bills to buying paperclips, everything you can imagine is in that particular number. And then, of course, that tier is on behalf number, that's just an offset to the revenue. So the subtotal for the operating costs is $37.4 million. On this next slide, when we talked about a minute ago, when I was talking about the new positions, the detail is in your board book, so I, but it was a lot of information, so we didn't want to put it in the PowerPoint because it was going to just be too much and you wouldn't be able to read it, it was going to be too small. So what we really did was just a summary, just showing that Veterans Memorial High School, the new positions are about $1.3 million of that number. And then the new positions just in general, district-wide, are about $498,000 and the reclassifications of positions is about $90,000. So all in all, it's that $1.9 million, which ties back to that number I had discussed a minute ago. When we look at the general operating fund, and it's going to get a little confusing here and I'm going to try to, I'm going to do my best to try to explain this as we go through, but please ask me questions if you, if I'm not being clear. Total revenues in the budget that we're showing you is about $187.8 million. The total expenditures add up to about $196, almost $197 million. So right now, when you look at that budget, we're $9 million in the red. So that means we're going to have to go into our savings account, $9 million to make that budget work. Well, this year, we have a one-time reimbursement that we're going to receive from, a refund from the construction account of about $4.4 million. Again, it's a one-time thing, it's going to happen during that year and that's it. And so that will bring our revenue versus expenditures down to $4.7 million in the red, from that $9 million down to $4.7 million. Then, we were, we had some recommendations as to how to try to accomplish some of the things the board was wanting to accomplish. So one of the things that we are going to fully discuss is obviously, and board's going to tell us whether they want us to do this or not before we move forward with any of this, is that we're proposing changing the class size. So that means that changing the ratio, the student-to-teacher ratio in the classrooms, and what it really boils down to is adding two students per classroom. So right now, in elementary schools where the ratios are 22 to 1, they would go to 24 to 1. And the, and there's a, there was some information in your board book about that and kind of told you exactly how much it would be for the middle schools and the high schools, but what it boils down is two students per classroom. And as we're kind of looking at it too, based on attendance, if we use that 95%, which is kind of what we really do, are doing, then you're really, the teachers, I mean, obviously it's not going to be in every classroom, but you're going to miss one or two kids in every, that's what the probability is at 95%. If you take 24 students, 95% attendance, you're going to be about two kids short. So they'll be back to the 22 to 1 actually in the classroom. But I guess we can't guarantee that because we don't know, are they going to be gone out of that classroom, this classroom? You don't know where they're going to be gone out of. So we have to say that 24 to 1 is going to be the max and we're going to expect that if y'all were to propose that, or accept that we go with this proposal. If we did that, then the revenues versus expenditures, you would end up with a surplus this year of $313,000. Okay, so that again is with no pay raises. That does include the retention incentive that's in there, okay? All right, so I'm going to go to the next slide. So these are all the budget, or some of the budget considerations that we have for you and, of course, we're definitely open to ones that you may recommend as well. So we talked about if the board wanted to give a pay raise, one of the things that would happen on that first line is that we would first recommend is that we would rescind the retention incentive so we could give a pay raise to all the employees because the retention incentive is not going to touch every employee, it's only going to touch those that are eligible for it. Then, so that's that $1.8 million. Then we have a change in the student-to-teacher ratio, again, that number you saw a minute ago, the $5 million. And so, and we have that one-time reimbursement from the construction funds, which is that $4.4 million. If we were to do that, we would end up with a surplus to start with of two, of about $2 million, okay? So all the things we looked at a minute ago, you end up with about an excess money of $2 million that you can do something with. Well, if your employee raise options that we've talked about is if we did like TASB model number one, which is a 3% increase, and all that detailed information was in your board book as well, and I know we've talked about it here and TASB's presented on it, then that model costs $5.4 million, almost $5.5 million. If you did that, if you did the, the raise with the class size increase, then you would end up with a deficit or a budget that was in the red, $3.3 million. So that would mean that you're going to get rid of the incentive, you're going to increase the class, the rate, student-to-teacher ratio, and we're going to get that $4.4 million one-time situation, the transfer, and so you'd end up with $3.3 million in the red. Now, the next one down that shows that if you decided, we don't want to change the class size ratio, we want to leave it alone, but we want to still consider all the other factors we, I just mentioned, then we would end up with a budget that's $8 million in the red. Now, if we did TASB model number two, which is a 2% raise, then that model costs $4.2 million. And if we implemented that with saying we're going to go ahead and increase the class size ratio, then you would adopt a budget that was $2 million in the red. So we would be taking that out of fund balance. And if you decided, well, we want to do that model, but we don't want to increase the student-to-teacher ratio, then we would adopt a budget that was $7 million and that would be coming out of fund balance. So some of those options may look pretty good to some of y'all, but I want to give you the true picture of what's going to happen in 1819. And before I go through that, oh, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Elizondo, would you please go back over the classroom ratios?
Yes.
Elementary, middle, and high school.
Sure, and let me, I think there's a slide in here. Did we, did we put this slide in here?
Back to.
Back to. Heard it, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, so currently, and I said this information was in the board book, but it was set up a little bit different, it was like in a memo form. But currently, in elementary, our ratio is 22 students to one teacher from K to, K to 4?
K to 4.
K to 4th grade, right. And so we were, one of the proposals was to change that number to 24 to 1, which wouldn't, which would require that we send a waiver to TA to let them know we're going to do that. And the savings and number of classroom teachers would be 48. And so that equates to about $2.7 million in, in savings and expenditures. At the middle school, they're currently at 26 to 1, and we were proposing moving that 28 to 1, which would save approximately 19 teachers, which is about a million-dollar savings. And in high school, they're 28 to 1, we're proposing moving up to 30 to 1, that's about 20 teachers that would not have to be hired, which would be about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars. Now, I don't want you to think that anybody is going to, I hope I say this right, Marco, lose their job. These are, we have a lot of vacancies right now, so these would just be positions that wouldn't be filled. We're not actually going to go and hand out pink slips to anybody. Sure. You bet. Go back a couple of slides. Okay. So before I go over this slide, I do want to just mention in case some of y'all were not aware, last time I presented, I was, I kind of shared a little information with you about Northeast ISD and that their administration had gone to their board initially, presented a budget with no pay increases. And the board said, no, that's not going to work, go back and put some pay increases in here. And so yesterday, we got information and we were reading it on, it's on the Northeast ISD website on their, on their homepage, a letter from the superintendent talking about next year's budget, 2017, 2018 budget. And what they ended up doing is saying, Northeast said that they're not going to give raises next year. They can't, they cannot do it, they can't afford to do it, and they're not going to give raises next year. They're also going to look at implementing a cost containment program for their district, which usually when we use those kinds of terms, it translates to iron freezes and if you start hearing the word austerity, it means we're going to start eliminating positions because it gets to that, to the point where you're trying to just make sure that you can survive. And they also said that they're going to implement a, they're going to propose to their board to implement a new tax strategy. And what that means is they're going to increase their local maintenance tax rate, they're going to go to their voters, I presume, to go increase their local maintenance tax rate by two pennies. Because for Northeast ISD, that generates about $16 million of additional revenue for them. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea as to what one of our neighboring school districts is doing as we kind of discuss these things. So I'm going to go forward and talk about 1819 because even though we talked about 17, 18 a minute ago, and some of the things on there seem pretty palatable, that you're thinking, oh, well, $2 million, $3 million into the fund balance is not too bad. Well, here are a lot of scenarios that Nicole actually put together that we wanted to share with you. And that is that when we look at that, the beginning revenue versus expenditures, that's based on the budget that's out there right now with no pay increases or anything, keeping the retention incentive, hiring the new staff that we needed for veterans and all that, that was that negative $9 million that you saw initially. So that would be the number that we would be starting with for 1819 if we adopted that particular budget. And once we, the retention incentive is a one-year thing, so for 1819, it comes out of the picture, you don't have to worry about that. But in 1819, we have some other costs that are coming online that we know of. We know we're going to have two new elementary schools that are going to be opening. We know we're going to be finishing the Veterans Memorial High School, the 12, the senior class. We know we're going to be adding some costs to early college high school and to JSTEM. So we're talking approximately about $4 million. So you're going to start off in the red that year, right off the bat, at $11 million. And I don't know about y'all, but that scares the heck out of me. $11 million to start off the year in the red without doing anything just because you turn the switch from one school year to the next. So at best, I'm going to go down through some of the things a little bit further down that page. So we're talking about some considerations during 17, 18 budget, you know, what things that we can do to kind of make the budget a little bit more plausible during, for 17, 18. So the first thing you see there, which has a class size increase with no 2017, 2018 raise. So that means that the board would approve that we increased the class size ratios and we would give no raise during 17, 18. If you did that, you would start off the 18, 19 school year, $6 million in the red to start. Again, not a, not a pretty place to start, but better than $11 million, but it's still $6 million that's going to, we're going to have to figure out where we're going to get that, those revenues or eliminate expenditures to get to a better point. Yes, sir, Mr. Mises.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Elizondo. I know that we've talked about these negative projections and last time we spoke, a great portion of those negative numbers came from the fact that we were not at capacity at Veterans Memorial High School. So when you look at 1819, are you assuming that we've reached capacity at that school or that we have not?
We have, when we're looking at these numbers for 1819, we are projecting already for those, for that school year, based on the students being whatever the project, the enrollments are for that year. So yes, you're going to, that's just starting off. So you'll pick up a little bit of money for a little bit of student increase, you may pick up another million dollars, maybe half a million dollars, but nowhere near enough to wipe off those kinds of numbers. Because what's happening with the kids at Veterans Memorial, as I said a minute ago, we're decreasing ADA, we did last year, we did this year. While we're doing is transferring students. We're transferring students from Judson High School to Veterans. So that money we're receiving, we're already receiving because the kids are already here.
I realize that.
Yes, sir.
Now, what I would like to know too is we have two new campuses opening up. Is that what is, part of this negative 11.2?
Yes, sir, that $4 million negative number up there, there's a little asterisk and it goes to the bottom and shows, yes, that one, there's one school that's going to be opening or projected to open in August of 18, and the other one is projected to open in January of 19.
So the negative four, have you taken into account the additional ADA we would receive by having new students in those campuses?
Again, if the kids show up, then we'll be a little bit better than that. But all we're showing right now is we're taking the kids that we currently have and to shoot them back out, like we're moving the kids from Masters to the new elementary school in the south, and we're moving kids from Rolling Meadows to the kid, to the kids in, yes, to the ones that know Wortham Oaks.
Well, and we wouldn't have passed a bond to build new schools if we didn't expect to see growth in these areas that the demographers have indicated.
I agree with you. However, as you, as you know too, those schools are already beyond capacity. And so we, whether we experience more growth or not, those schools are needed and we are going to experience more growth. I don't want to mislead anybody, we are, that is going to happen. So we will pick it up, but based on the demographers studies, the next couple of years, we're not going to see that big growth. The big growth is going to be three to four years out.
And then the last thing I'll say, and I'll defer until I let you finish more of your presentation. I think you had concluded, or mentioned to the board that there are growing pains, if you will, in opening up a new facility, and that's what we're experiencing at Veterans Memorial. But that negative that we've seen the last two years will diminish over time. So I would imagine 2018, 2019 may be a hit because we have two new schools, but I would imagine that should also diminish the following year. It's just the fact that we're expanding, that we're seeing this sort of negative impact on our budget. Would you say that's correct or not?
It will to some degree, but not anything that's material, not that close, not that fast. It will slowly start to recover, but it's not going to be something where you're going to say, well, we're going to be down $6 million one year, we're going to be up, you know, back up to zero or even $3 million the next year. It's going to take a while before you can get back to where you're doing well. And now, one of the things that, not for 1819, but 1920, I mean, I don't know what the legislature's going to do, but they may come back then and do something that will help. But this is just kind of showing you for the biennium that we know of right now, without special session, without knowing what they're going to do, this is what it looks like. So let's say that we continued on, I want to kind of bring you to the one that says no class size increase, so the board were to say, no, we're not doing a student-to-teacher ratio change, and we're going to go ahead and give a 3% raise. Well, that means that the 1819 school year would start off with a $17.7 million in the red. That happens two years in a row, the school district is bankrupt. Because that's about how much fund balance we have, a little bit more than that, but not much. And I hate to put it that bluntly, but I just want, I don't want anybody to come back and say, well, nobody ever told us, you know, we didn't know. I'm, I'm just, and I, and I hate sharing this kind of information because I, like I said, told before, I wish I could be positive and say, yep, everybody gets a raise, everything's great, but that's not where we're at. So I just want to make sure that, because when, I know when we looked at 17, 18, it doesn't look that bad. You can say, well, we can take it, we can handle it. But when you get to 17, when 18, 19, then if you decide to do somebody's, make somebody's decision, know that there are going to be some really significant and major decisions to make in the future about where cuts are going to happen because they will have to happen. Okay, now with all that said, I'm going to continue. Okay, so we already covered this slide about the proposed student-to-teacher, student ratio. Yes, ma'am? Absolutely.
So these ratios. Sorry, these ratios represent maximum class sizes, not like a student, so for example, it doesn't mean like an average student?
No.
Okay.
No, we would cap the classrooms at 24 to 1. If this were to have been approved, the plan is to cap the elementaries at 24 to 1.
That's correct.
I wonder if you were shaking your head, no. The middle schools, 28 to 1, and the high schools, 30 to 1.
And then one more question I had was, so.
In the core, I'm sorry. In the core, only in the core classrooms, right?
And the, from the middle and the high school?
Yes, only the core. Yeah, this is based on only core classrooms.
Right, okay. And then the, you said that would, like, you know, it would save some positions that it would be, the things that are already vacant.
Yes.
But not all of those vacancies are distributed equally across campuses, so how would we accommodate that? Would that be done through leveling or, yeah?
Yes, that would be done through the leveling process.
Okay, thanks.
But we do have, and we look at it, and we have, how many vacancies do we have right now, teachers' spots?
We have approximately 20 at the elementary, we have approximately 15 at the middle school, and 31 to, 35 at the high school, when we anticipate more resignations before the July
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, so before I move on, because we're going to go into different funds now, the challenge tuition fund and what have you, I just, again, if y'all have any questions, please ask me. This is, this is really critical and I want to just make sure that we have a clear understanding of where we're at and because I'm going to need from y'all to please visit with Dr. Montoya and give us some guidance because we're, we're, we prepared already the agenda for Monday's meeting and we tried to think of as many things as we could to put on there. We have on the agenda that, you know, rescinding the, the retention incentive, which may or may not happen depending on whether, because we're, we're supposing that that's only going to happen if raises are given. If raises are not given, that that would stay in place. It's on the agenda, you don't have to vote, and obviously we just not vote on it and take no action and it stays in place. But we talked to Legal about this, and the other thing that Legal told us, and when I say Legal, Paige Kyle with Walsh Gallegos, was that the portion about salary increases and what they're saying or suggesting, and they said is that we not take any action on giving salary increases at this time, that we pass an agenda item at that meeting saying that the board may at some point decide to give a mid-year pay increase and that will happen after the general, the special session of the legislature, only because they're concerned that if we were to, if the board decided they want to go ahead with an increase, then then the legislature came back and mandated something and awarded it in such a way that it would circumvent, because when we've done this in the past, we've said this includes anything that the legislature will grant in the future. But she was concerned that they would word something or craft something that would trump what we did and then cause us to come out and have to give more money as well beyond that. So they were saying that they're advising their clients to adopt that language instead, and it doesn't mean the board has to give a raise later, but if they decide to, then there's something in place that legally the board can do it if that happens because otherwise we can't legally give raises to contracted employees once they've started working unless something like that is in place. Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about the proposed $1,000 increase that's been floating around that Governor Abbott has talked about?
Yes, that's exactly right. We don't.
And of course, we know it'll be an unfunded mandate.
Correct. Based on the way it's being proposed right now, that is correct.
Thank you.
Sure. And so, yes, ma'am?
I have questions regarding the new positions that are being proposed.
Sure.
Do we ask now or you want me to wait and is it gonna come up later on?
It will, it will, actually, no. They were already in the machine, so you're welcome to ask at any point you want.
Okay, I see at Veterans Memorial, it, we have, we need, we need a new assistant principal and assistant athletic trainer, um, we need two fine arts teachers, fourteen teachers, three English, three math, three science and three social studies and two languages other than English. What, and it just says increase in enrollment. What is our enrollment?
The projected enrollment at Veterans Memorial will be a thousand sixty-five, ma'am. Up from six hundred and five or six hundred and fifteen this year.
And are we doing eight period days? Yes, eight period days? So, if we're assuming, uh, an English teacher has eight periods and we're gonna say twenty-eight to one, because we have an increased class size, they each have two hundred and twenty-four students, because that is a core class and we need three of those, so times three, so we need six hundred and seventy-two students for English?
Well, and just to kinda point out real quick, I'm sorry, you, he can definitely answer that, answer that question, but those staff, like those FTEs, the fourteen teachers, we have no cost attached to that item.
Right.
Because those teachers are gonna be transferred, uh, from Judson High School. Now, if we don't have that many kids, then they're not gonna be transferred, they're gonna stay there. But if we do have that many kiddo show up, we're definitely gonna transfer.
That's my question. We have six hundred and seventy students to justify three English teachers moving from another campus.
It's an additional four hundred and twenty-five coming in from Kitty Hawk, so if you take the four twenty-five divided by three, uh, it's whatever that value is, a hundred and some.
Four twenty-five divided by three?
Yes, ma'am.
Hundred and forty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
As a class load divided by eight? Well, divided by seven, right, because they have a.
The high schools have a seven period day.
Oh, they're on a seven period day, not an eight period day?
And divide by six because they have the planning period.
Okay, I thought I had asked eight. Did we say? It's seven, okay.
You did, you did.
I did, right? Okay. So, it's six periods that they'll have?
Yes, ma'am.
At twenty-eight students each. So, they each have a hundred and sixty-eight course, course load, times three teachers, five hundred and four students. And you said, how many are transferring?
Four hundred and twenty-five are anticipated from Kitty Hawk.
Okay.
So, around, we, we couldn't do two because it may be, the, the classes would be too large.
Correct. And how many counselors are there currently?
There are two counselors, uh, one lead and one counselor.
And they have five hundred per course, course load right now? Or no, they'll have less, they'll have three hundred and something per course, course load, I mean, for their group?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many assistant principals do they have currently?
One assistant principal and one academic dean.
And athletics doesn't count for the, the class size?
That's correct.
Can we still get numbers for the athletics?
Yes, ma'am. Which, which numbers would you like?
How many total students are in athletics?
Yes, ma'am, I can get those for you.
Do you have those right now or no?
No, ma'am, I know.
Okay, okay, no problem. Um, let me see, that was, that was it for that. If we can move to the page ten. I'm assuming these are gonna be the same thing for Judson High School, Wagner High School and, um, the early college high school college prep teacher? They'll be required to enroll, so they'll have a full load?
That's correct, ma'am. That's with the anticipated numbers, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, on page eleven, we're asking for a math specialist. Do we not have a math specialist anymore?
Yes, we do, ma'am.
So, we're asking for an additional math specialist?
That will be an elementary and a, and a student title.
Right, right. I was just, I saw there's federal funds. So, this is gonna be an elementary math specialist? That is correct.
For a title.
Title elementaries, ma'am. And the position right under, the behavior specialist, that person will share J-Care, D-A-E-P and the elementary campuses, Candlewood, Woodlake and Pashaw, that person's gonna service all of those places?
What pa, that's special, what page are you at?
Yeah, it's special ed. It's right below the math specialist, the behavior specialist?
Yes.
It's on page eleven.
Mm-hmm, page eleven, I'm sorry. That person's gonna service Candlewood, Woodlake Elementary, J-Care, D-A-E-P, AEP.
Yes.
And then on page thirteen, I noticed that we're moving a lot of people from coordinators to district administrators, from coordinators to directors, from specialists to, is that right? From clerks to assistants, from clerks to specialist. We're reclassifying?
That's correct, ma'am.
So, we're not gonna have a coordinator of staff development? We're eliminating that position?
No, it's open right now. It's a vacant position. It's paid by title funds.
There are, um, there were two changes that were made from this document to the document that you're gonna be seeing on, on Monday.
Okay.
The, uh, that particular position, the professional development position, was originally gonna be converted to the early college high school administrator to take care of all the, at all the schools. But when we were gonna do that, then somebody brought it to our attention that that particular position is federally funded, the professional development person, and so we can't use profess, we can't use federal dollars for the other position. So, that position is now added as a new position with budget impact on the Monday information that you're gonna receive. So, that's why, just to clarify that right now. So, I'm not sure what the plans are now, if they're gonna continue that position with those federal funds or if they're gonna limit, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with that.
Okay. And then I did, I do appreciate where you have, whoever created this, where you have all of the justifications as to why they're, they're needing the reclassification, where it says pupil services, instructional materials, record scanning clerk, increased job duties. Can we get a list of what those increased job duties are, not right now, but later on, to justify that reclassification?
I, I think, yes, we can, but I, I, I think, but I think all they're, what they're doing with that particular position, that individual works only part-time, they don't work a full forty-hour, uh, shift and they're going to, they wanna go ahead and increase their, uh, workload and have them work a full-time shift because they have a lot of scanning to do.
So, they're gonna go to part-time to full-time?
And it's, like, part-time, I don't want you to think it's twenty hours. I think they're working like twenty-something to thirty hours right now and they wanna make them a full forty hours.
Right, but it's not a full-time position.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's a new position?
It is a different one? Okay, I'm so sorry, my bad.
That position is actually on page twelve.
Okay, I'm sorry, on page thirteen, pupil services.
So, we have two scanning clerks?
We have a scanning clerk that's gonna get increased job duties. I don't know, that's my mistake.
Page thirteen.
That was my, one of my questions also, because it looks like we have two in that position that we're.
Correct.
Right. Is that two different people, two positions? So, one of those is a duplicate?
Page thirteen, third from the bottom up.
Right, that's the one I'm looking at.
Those are the people that work at the testing department, Mr., uh, Mr. Gonzalez. It's the testing department people that you had asked.
So, we'll get that corrected for you.
So, we saved two thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you. Do we still have a testing coordinator?
Yes.
So, we have a testing coordinator or a director, I don't know what we're calling that person?
Administrator.
Test administrator and now we're gonna have a testing specialist and then we're gonna have a testing assistant? And not a testing clerk anymore?
No, they're still para professionals. We're just adding, as we add, we haven't added any upgrades to those paras, but we've added, uh, schools.
Right, no, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to, do, do we still have a, are we still gonna have a testing clerk?
Yes.
Because here it says a testing clerk is moving to testing assistant.
She, the testing clerk is moving to a testing assistant. We're doing a, doing away with the clerk.
That's what, okay, that's what I just asked. Okay, so we're not having clerks anymore?
No.
Got it. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna proceed. If y'all, let me know if y'all need anything, come across. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I do have a few and might as well get them out now rather than later. Appreciate the presentation as always, Mr. Elizondo.
I'm not done, but, yes, sir.
One thing that, um, came, came up is that, um, you had, uh, I think, an average daily attendance of ninety-four point six into this, um, budget. And so, was that the same percentage you used for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as well? Ninety-four point six?
Yes.
And our average has been ninety-five, maybe even ninety-six percent?
No, this year, it was, uh, I saw two different numbers. One of them was ninety-four point nine, other one was ninety-five. They're still working on the PMS final submission numbers, so it'll be somewhere between ninety-four point nine, ninety-five point one, somewhere in there.
And that one percentage represents, uh, a significant amount of money?
One percentage does, but that ninety-four point nine to ninety-five point one is a tenth, I mean, it's not one percentage, otherwise, you're right, it would be, it is a.
I have ninety-four point zero six. Is that what you have or did you have ninety-four point?
No, ninety-four point six, ninety-four point six zero.
Six zero, so I reversed the zero, the six and the zero, so ninety-four and a half, a little over that.
Yes, sir.
So, um, so I wrote it down correctly. Okay, so that half percentage wouldn't be as significant as a full percentage then.
Right.
Um, so I just wanted to look at that, because you referenced ninety-five percent, so I know in your head, you're thinking ninety-five percent would be our benchmark, that's what we typically would be. And, uh, I know that this is probably not the right forum, but just rhetorically, what are we doing to get students in the classroom so that we can increase that percentage? Because it, it makes a difference for us.
Sure.
And then additionally, uh, the class size ratio, if we do proceed in that, that direction, one of the, the biggest, um, issues that's come back is, is assistance for, the teachers have asked for professional development and classroom management. You have larger classes, I suspect you're going to have a greater need to help with classroom management. So, I need you, Dr. Montoya, to, to work with us in determining what that might be if we decide to go that route. Um, and then, no raises were included. I remember you said that the projections did not include raises. But I will say that in the presentation, I have still not received the information from TASB that I requested that looked at a targeted pay increase to the segment of employees that have the highest turnover rate. So, is that still coming and will it be here before the Monday meeting?
It is still coming. I'm not sure, I called today to ask them where it was, but, you know, where they were in the process, but I didn't, wasn't able, I left them a message. So, I'll have to wait and see, hopefully they can get it to us by that point in time.
One of the scenarios that would naturally play out in my mind is if we don't have enough money to pay everyone a raise, that we just identify those segments that would, that, that are valued in terms of retention and experience is important. So, we're looking at that so that we can do something. I, I would hate to go back and say, we're not gonna give any raises again for the second year in a row. Uh, we've already had a high turnover rate and we just can't afford to hit, have that happen again.
And just, I'm sorry, just, real quick, just on that, one of the things I mentioned that I think you recall a minute ago is that council was kind of advising us to hold off on that a little bit until, if we were gonna do something, to wait until after the special session was over, in case the legislature mandated that we did something and they didn't give us any funds, just to make sure that we didn't get into a worse financial situation. So, if you would like to do that, there's gonna be an agenda item, um, at the meeting on Monday, that's, that the board's gonna be able to vote on to say, we wanna have the ability to, uh, give a, a pay increase after the legislative session is over. Um, and if, and then you can, all, y'all can decide and y'all can tell us what you would like to do.
Well, would it be, and I, I'd like to know going forward, this is not gonna be the first time we have a, a special session. I know our cycle, our budget cycle, fiscal year ends June thirtieth and then even begins July first. Uh, there are other districts that have their cycle end August thirty-first and begin September one. So, that we can get ahead of that and not have to do something like that, we're just waiting to see what the legislature does, um, how hard would it be to move our fiscal year?
Um, it's a very involved process. I'm not gonna tell you it can't be done, because it can. We moved it to the year where we are right now, I think it was in, I don't even wanna guess, it's been like this for quite a while now. But even if we were a September first district and let's say that the government decided to call two special sessions, then the next one would still give you a problem if you were a September first issue, because they would be in session all the way through the end of August and you wouldn't be able to do anything anyway until September. So, uh, again, it's a long, you never know. I mean, I just don't know what's gonna happen, I'm just saying, can, but to answer your question specifically, we could change it. It is a very involved process. We have to do a lot of things with the agency to get to this change, but it is possible to do.
The problem with the September first budget is you've got students and you wanna purchase supplies for the start of school and you can't. And then you're stuck until after September one, which we were very happy when we moved it to July first, because then we could be prepared for the first day of school.
Right, there were some very valid reasons that we moved it, but the reason you're saying is also a valid, you know, against it.
Well, I, I just know school districts do it, so, I mean, are they suffering or are they not able to purchase instructional materials?
That is correct. They have to wait.
If they can do it, I'm certain we can. So, we just gotta get ahead of it and plan. And so, uh, I, I don't know, I just don't like to be in a position, if we're gonna be strategic, where we're, we're looking at what legislature will do. Right now, we need to provide leadership to the community, to our teachers, we need to give them a raise and so we shouldn't be tied. Now, I know that the mandate unfunded wouldn't be good, but we don't even know if that's going to happen. It'll be discussed in Austin.
And, and just to kinda say, reiterating, I, I just can't emphasize it enough, we're gonna do whatever the board asks us to do. Y'all are gonna tell us what to do. Based on the numbers that we're seeing, a raise is not a good idea, but we're gonna do whatever the board tells us to do.
Well, I, I know we'll have a lot of input regarding that here. I guess my last question is about the incentive. I'm a little disappointed to see that it's on the recommendation to be pulled and, um, if you recommend no raises and you rescind the incentive.
No, it's one or the other. We, if we're gonna do no raises, the retention incentive will stay in place. I mean, unless the board decides they're gonna rescind it themselves, but we're not recommending that we do both. We, if we are gonna not give raises, the retention incentive will stay in place for the one year.
And, and, I mean, you're, you're an expert in this area, Mr. Elizondo, but one thing that I will say is this, if we were to look at doing raises, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, if we were to implement raises, we have already the incentive bonus there. If we incorporate that in our strategic process of giving a raise, it's incremental and sort of realizing that six twenty-five is already on the table, we don't have to go two percent. We can go one percent. And that's not what I'm recommending, but I'm just giving you a, for instance. That is a one-time fee. If we were to say, get rid of the incentive pay, go two percent, then next budget cycle, we're paying two percent on top of what we already, if, if we were to give raises. We have a higher increase is what I'm trying to say, rather than the one-time one-point-eight million that we allocate, which won't even be that, it's gonna be less than that one-point-eight. So, I think that that's intelligent, that we're able to say six hundred and twenty-five is already there for our employees and then just incorporate it intelligently in the type of raise that we give, if, if it's the board's will to provide a raise. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, I def, I definitely understand and I just wanna bring your, bring us back to this slide that I said, showed a minute, a little bit, a while ago that we discussed that I said, showed a minute, a little bit, a while ago, that we discussed, that if you were to say that in this year, in seventeen eighteen, you wanted to do away with the retention incentive and incorporate those funds into a raise, and we even went with a two percent raise instead of a three percent raise that Tasby's worked on, then you would, and, and if you did the class size increase and went ahead with that, then you would be entering the eighteen-nineteen school year with a ten-point-four-eight million dollar in the red to start the year without doing anything else.
Again, just so I'm clear, the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen numbers that you're showing us show the recent retention incentive, it does not have a raise in this, in this matrix right now.
What's happening here is, when I went through it, I was explaining that, at the very top of the, the very top of the page, what shows that we're bringing across that nine million dollars, and then we're adding back the one-point-eight million dollars, saying we're getting away from it, because we're not gonna do that, obviously. But we are gonna have additional four million dollars' worth of new costs for schools and programs that are gonna be opening in eighteen-nineteen. Then, if you look, and so we're gonna be at a negative eleven million dollars there. And then if you look a little bit further down the page, where it says, "Class size increase is approved", and we do a two percent, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen raise, then we're gonna be at a ten million dollar. Um, and that's, the reason it's not any greater than that is because of the class size increase being approved. Then we would be at ten-point-four million dollars in the red to start the eighteen-nineteen school year.
And what I would say then, just to look real clear, if that two percent in twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen was one-point-five, or even one percent, and the retention, reduction, incentive was not, continued moving forward, we could do both, and, and in, in good faith, honor what we did in October, and still provide some sort of raise. Now again, I just want for the record, I don't like one, or even one-point-and-a-half percent. But it's just trying to illustrate that there is a way to get both objectives done. Uh, just, just to put that out there, um...
You can get them done?
Yeah, they can be done.
But, but that number, that ten-point-four million dollars, if you do not, uh, you know, in, in eighteen, when you get to eighteen-nineteen, you're gonna end up with being, if you did a one percent instead of a two percent, and you did the class size increase, instead of being ten-point-four million dollars in the red, you're still gonna be nine million dollars.
It should be, it will be less than the ten, I know that, because one-point-eight is only a one-time fee.
I know, but nine million dollars, that's still, I mean, to start the year, nine million dollars.
We'll dismantle all of that, because we do need to look at what that is. But I'm just talking specifically about raises and the fee. They both can be done. Now, regarding this eleven million, I appreciate a heads-up on it, so we can start looking at it. Uh, and I think we can find some, some, some inefficiencies, but thank you for your clarity.
I'm having a little bit of anxiety regarding the, um, class size ratio. While I see why it's a great deal financially, um, and if we choose to go that way, at elementary, it's gonna happen. I wanna make sure that the administration is gonna do their due diligence when we look at the master schedules in August, when we have real warm bodies in the classrooms, that we're not gonna find what we found a couple of years ago, where somebody had fifteen, 'cause it's not fair for a middle school teacher to have fifteen in the classroom, and we've got a kindergarten teacher with twenty-four. I just wanna put that out there before, at least before I make my decision. I'm gonna need to note that.
And, and again, members of the board, it goes back to all of us working together with the campus principals who have that direct charge of working their master schedule, and hopefully, as, as you said, Dr. Salinas, to do correctly the ratios, you know, so that that doesn't happen. I, I think the other underlying piece, and I know Mr. Elizondo's hitting it, is we don't wanna get in two years where we have to riff staff. I mean, that's really what we don't wanna do. Obviously, the ideal is as people leave, we look at each position, do we need to fill it or not? And, and, and that's the easy, the lesser, uh, difficult part. But, you know, again, you know, the times are hard this year, because sometimes, I don't know, if the legislature understands exactly what's going on, and I support what Mr. Elizondo's saying, that we have to be very conservative on this big picture and, and be careful.
And I just wanna make sure we're including not just academics, we're including athletics and fine arts.
And, and we, you know, when we were putting this proposal together, I'm gonna be really honest and say, we went for the, if we will, and I hate to use this, this kind of, it was a low-hanging fruit, what, we could get to a big number real quick. But what we had talked about at our chat meeting was, "All right, we need to start looking at administration. What can we do on our behalf to make sure that we help with this problem?" But it wasn't something we could do right away. So that is something that's gonna happen, that we're gonna start looking at. Okay, if somebody leaves from our staff, do we really need them? Can we do without them? Let's freeze that position, let's put it on hold, and not hire them, to make sure that we start, um, whittling away at that negative number, so when we get a little friction to the, a little, we don't want the classroom to be the ones that suffer. We want, I mean, it needs to be across everybody. Uh, and we totally understand that. I mean, what, our goal is to teach kids, and we need teachers in the classroom. That's what we need to have. So we've talked about that, and we started to look at which positions can we do that with? So is there, uh, right now, is there becoming vacant? In the future, it may be, as Dr. Matoya said, where we have to go into a situation where, even if they're not vacant, we have to come to the person and say, you know, "We're having to change, and we can't have the position anymore."
I'd like to, go ahead. I'd like to say that, as the board looks at areas of inefficiency, and I, and in my last remarks, by saying there's some inefficiencies probably that we might be able to look at. One of the things that I will say is that title funding has come up pretty regularly. And there is, uh, that, notably, the backpack program that we've talked about for four-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, that at this point, if it's backpacks or teachers in the classrooms, teachers are gonna be in the classrooms. And so when we look at title funding, that would extend to anything that we're using title dollars for to put, to teachers to help with our budgets, because instruction is ultimately what we're here to provide. And so I think there would probably be room within the five million dollars, if, I don't even know if there's more, but of titled money that we receive, there's room for opportunity there. So we haven't even examined that, to see what we may need to do in terms of shifting our, our strategy.
Ms. Macias, if I may, at this point, um, I just wanna, uh, something that we look at always, we're looking at data, right? Because data drives, it paints a picture, and it tells us where we need to go. And everything that you're saying is correct. And, um, what we're doing through the RTI process is we're, we're looking at bringing in viable curriculum in reading and math, and I know that y'all have sets of data. And so, so what are we gonna do differently? And we have to think, again, always thinking outside the box and doing what's in the best interest of children. And another piece of it, and I've talked about it before, is of course, providing the ongoing staff development for our teachers. In addition to that, we've talked about leadership. And so we're, we're working on plans of action, how we can address all the areas of challenges, and making sure that we're fiscally responsible for our state funds. We wanna make sure that everything that we do is going to be effective. But if it's gonna be effective, it's gonna be with monitoring, professional development. We know this, because of what research says, and we know that, that those are best practices. So we're all on the same page here in this room. We want what's best for our children here at Judson, and we are being very responsible, you know? And I wanna just speak to, I mean, Mr. Elizondo was speaking about how, when we meet, we look at the positions, we looked at all these positions, and we took a lot away, and we were thinking out, again, what can we do to help our district to be, I mean, fiscally responsible? And so we've had those conversations, we really have. And, you know, we're always trying to, to, to build up what we have, and we all know that instruction is, is, is the meat. You know, and we talked about, I know we mentioned, um, Dr. Salinas mentioned the math specialist. You know, that's based on data. Our elementaries, we need a lot of help in our reading and math. And we're never, ever gonna close those achievement gaps if we don't invest, invest purposefully. And so I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I made that comment, 'cause we are spending state and federal funds, but again, we're doing it based on, on data and doing what research says is best for our children. Thank you.
And, and in addition to that, just to kinda show that we're, we're spending our money, even if we look at this current, for next year, if we look at the early college high schools that we're doing at all the schools, if we look at the T-STEM program, if you look at the staff and the expenditures, what we're having to pay tuition for the col, for Alamo colleges, we're spending well over, or pretty close to a million dollars for a, a new program that we're doing, that we're doing it for the kids, but it's costing our, our budget.
Thank you both, and, and Ms. Hernandez. Uh, I do realize that we're working diligently, but right now, it doesn't seem that we have a, a lot of time to make some quick decisions about things. And I mentioned the backpack one, because that's the, that's the one that I, I learned about some months ago. That's eight teachers, and eight teachers in math and in reading, in the areas that we need them, far outweigh, I believe in my opinion, any backpacks, that I don't even know what the ROI is on that. So hopefully, we're doing some real quick analysis, because we don't, we don't have time now. Now we're at a point, we're discussing budgets, and we can't give salary increases potentially, because we, we need to increase, uh, teacher class size ratio.
Yes, sir, we agree.
So, so I just, I mean, I understand the urgency here on our end. I, we, we need to talk about retention.
Definitely.
And, and instruction, and, and achievement, in which, we, we need to reevaluate our title funding as well. I mean, seriously.
Yes, sir, we agree on that.
Thank you, Mr. Elizondo, for, um, bringing forth what I was gonna mention, which is, um, the early college high school program. Um, I, I'm an educator. I believe that all our students should be prepared. I think it's a wonderful program, but I'm not sure we can afford it. Our charge is to educate pre-K to twelve. If we're gonna have to cut back on class sizes, cut back on teachers, go into our fund balance so heavily, I really have strong concerns about paying for our students to get college hours. I, um, I, I talked with Dr. Cantu, I spent quite a bit of time with her last week, um, because when I saw the initial budget figures, I'm, like, went into shock, and started thinking, "What is it that we can do?" Um, the fact that JECCA costs, how much money is that, that we're paying for JECCA? Two-point-five million a year? Um, and now we have early college high schools on the regular campuses where those students could be served? I understand, but I think that we have to put everything on the table. We can't, we have to consider everything that's out there. Do I wanna close a school? No. But we also have elementary schools that have low enrollments. Can we consider transferring some of those schools and closing an elementary school? I, I think we're at the point where we have hard decisions to make, and I think we can't just automatically say that nothing, some of these things are not on the table. Um, there are tough decisions, but I can't in good conscience say that we're gonna dip into our fund balance, eight millions dollars this year, and another eleven million dollars next year, and then what happens? We can't do that. So to be fiscally responsible, we've got to look at every single program that's out there, and that's why I requested that data. Um, I also did not have, as I thought about it, and Dr. Cantu's not available right now, I understand, but did our memorandum of understanding with the colleges allow us, allow them to charge us that increase? Is that written into the memorandum of understanding?
Right now, we're in the process, uh, I think we're bringing the memorandum next month to you all, and yes, it's already embedded in there.
Well, the, the memorandum of understanding that we have, excuse me, with the, uh, for the early college high school program was already approved by the board, and those, uh, costs were in there. Now, this is the very first year that Alamo Colleges is charging for that, because before it was, there was no charge. And, um, the, the one that, um, that Ms. Barra's referring to is that we do have the regular dual credit, that's not early college high school, but we also have kids that are doing dual credit. So those are the MOUs that are coming next month, uh, which also have the same costs. The college doesn't care if it's an early college high school class, or if it's just a dual-credit class. They're gonna charge us for, um, the instruction of those, of the kids from, by the college professors, or even if it's our, um, teachers that kinda are their adjunct professors, there's still gonna be some kind of cost for that.
And again, the Alamo College system is gonna be charging all districts that have early college, so they're, they're not just picking on Judson, they're actually picking on about twenty or thirty other districts with the same issue.
Is that something we put out for bid?
No, um, what happens is that, um, we have to decide who a partner can be, what district can be a partner. Um, and we, by asking the districts, you know, by asking Alamo Community College, by asking, at one time, we were working, trying to work with Wayland Baptist, they were gonna charge. Uh, we were trying to work with Texas A&amp;M, San Antonio, they were gonna charge. So, um, there are gonna be fees regardless of who we went to, and truthfully, if my recollection is, is right, I'm, I'm pretty sure it is, that, um, the, what ACD is gonna charge us, Alamo Community Colleges or Alamo Community District, is a lot cheaper than what the other schools were gonna charge.
That's what Dr. Cantu explained to me. I just didn't know if that was something that we could bid out, if there was any point in even attempting that. It was a question that I had from a, a constituent.
I mean, there might, we, we really didn't look into it, and there might be some kind of an online program that may be cheaper. I'm not sure, but I don't know, you know, the, what the district's philosophy is on using online for a program like that.
My other concern is, um, when we look at the, the model that we have at JECCA versus what we're having at the early college high schools, I'm correct, am I not, that the JECCA teachers do not teach college classes?
I believe that's correct, that is correct. They only teach our, they, all those kids that are taking college classes go over to Northeast Lakeview College.
But we have our regular teachers teaching college classes at our other high schools.
Yes, that's the way the model was adopted initially with JECCA. And, uh, when we opened up the other early colleges, uh, we really had to start paying for, or working with our, uh, teachers to teach our own classes. But JECCA started the program as it is, and, uh, the plan has changed since, but not at JECCA.
So that's something we need to look at as well. Those teachers all are required by Alamo Community College, Northeast Lakeview, to have master's degrees plus eighteen hours in their areas of specialization. So there's absolutely no reason why we should not be utilizing our own personnel, and by doing so, we can certainly save some money.
Yes.
The other thing that was brought up to me was the cost-sharing model, and, uh, this was Dr. Cant, I got this information from Dr. Cantu, about how our students at JECCA are, um, being classed as a cohort, and because they're small cohorts of ten, they don't make up more than eighty percent of the course selection, and it costs us a lot more money. That is absolutely something that we need to look at. Um, that could save us to, two-hundred thousand dollars right off the bat, just by allocating them to larger cohorts.
That's great.
Okay, everything on the table. We gotta be transparent, and I'm so glad that we have people here in the audience who are listening and knowing that we are considering every available option.
And again, I go back to one of your comments, uh, Ms. Canoyer, that everything's on the table, and it may mean that we may have to look at some of our low enrollment schools and make some heavy-duty decisions.
Um, and I think that we also need to put it out there, that as Northeast ISD has indicated about a tax increase, that's something we're gonna have to look at for the future. There's, we can't continue this way.
And, and I, just to also let you know, and I think y'all know this already, but San Antonio ISD, last, I think it was last year, the year before, I think it was last year though, they also increased their local maintenance tax, but they went up thirteen cents, from a dollar four to a dollar seventeen. Um, yeah, so just to kinda, we're not, I mean, it's, that pattern is starting in the bigger districts now. It used to be a lot of the smaller districts, but it's starting now in the, the bigger districts too.
I wanted to say that, um, I have to, to echo Ms. Canoyer's sentiment about, uh, our core responsibilities. And ultimately, if things get too out of, uh, range for our budgets, our core is K through twelve.
Pre-K.
Pre-K through twelve, thank you, Mr. Canoyer. And, and ultimately...
To get those pages.
That ultimately is, is our charge. But I will tell you, Alamo College, with its cost-sharing measures, sorta changed the game. As you had said, it was not the way things used to be. And now, in that model, if they can't sustain their initial partnership, it changes how we also need to move forward to as a district. And, and naturally, if we, um, move away from that, we, we have other options to, to still pursue college readiness and preparation through SAT, ACT, S, I mean, all kinds of things that we can do that might be a little more cost-effective. The thing that I would state that we haven't talked a little bit about is the tax increase. What I would like to know is that our community seems extremely proud of the JECCA model. That's my impression of parents and families and people that are affiliated with the program. If we were to put on the table a tax increase is needed to continue supporting programs and collaborations like the early college, the voters have an opportunity to tell us, "Hey, we want you to continue supporting these programs." Anything that's a, a source of pride for the district and has yielded positive results, I would like an opportunity for us to continue. But when it comes back to things, if, if we just don't have support for it, we can't do it. But that would be something that if we put things on the table, I'd like to look at the community having an opportunity to say, "We support this measure, and we're okay with the tax increase, because we know this is happening." Which, none of this has been discussed. It's a tough deal, believe me, I know. But we're trying to do STEM, we're trying to do early college, and there's a lot of wonderful programs that will need community buy-in and support to sustain. Otherwise, we won't be able to do them.
And again, just a quick comment, there are several districts that are going to go to the voters to do a tax increase, as you said, appropriately, for programs and, and academics, et cetera.
I just wanna make, make it clear that there's no way that this can be done for this budget cycle. I understand that. None of these options that I'm discussing can happen this year. But as we progress through the next year, and we look at that looming bill that's gonna become due, we've got to, we've got to make sure that administration looks at everything and brings us some options, um, however difficult they are. But, you know, it's not unlimited money. It's, you know, I wish it were. I wish I had kind of a money tree, you know, not just in my backyard, but, you know, in the district's backyard that we could just pull from. And, and it's not that I don't think these programs are amazing, because I do. Oh my goodness, the fact that we can offer students, you know, college credit is amazing, and I, I truly believe in that. But again, we have to look at, what is it that is our charge? What is it that our taxpayers are, as Mr. Macias said, what is it that they will support? And I don't see how we can go and ask for a cost incre, a, a, a tax increase without showing good-faith effort on our part, on cutting things that are, you know, dessert. You don't cut out the meat and potatoes, but you can cut the dessert.
All right, I'm gonna continue with the presentation, so. So the next fund I'm gonna talk, the next fund I'm gonna talk about is the Child Nutrition Fund, just really briefly. This is the, uh, the fund, again, that, uh, where we collect, we account for the revenues and expenditures for the, uh, programs that we feed our kiddos with, the lunch and, and breakfast. For this twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen year, you can see that we're projecting a revenue for them of about twelve-point-eight million dollars. And on the expense side, uh, we're projecting an expense for them of about twelve-point-nine million dollars. It's really close to the revenue, uh, if I can get this thing to work. So when we look at the revenue and expenditure, uh, we're looking at about a twenty-three thousand dollar dip into their fund balance, and it's, that's nothing, that's negligible. They'll make that up, that's not a problem. Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify for the people in the audience, that is not something we can dip into to help with our looming budget deficit.
No, the, uh, those funds, the Child Nutrition Fund balance is only specifically to be used by the Child Nutrition Program. And when we do give a raise though, or anything like that, it does affect them, because of course, they have to pay for their own personnel. The next fund is the Debt Service Fund. Again, this is the fund that we use to pay for our principal and interest on our bonds, the mortgage payment that I talked about a little while ago. the mortgage payment that I talked about a little while ago. And again, the same thing applies here. Even though they have, we have a decent fund balance in the debt service fund, it can only be used to pay for those payments, we can't transfer that to pay for anything in the local maintenance side. So the revenue for that fund is about 37, excuse me, $34.7 million, and on the expense side, what is wrong with this name? It's about $34.8 million. Again, it's almost the same amount of money, it's about $62,000 difference, and again, they do have enough fund balance to cover that, so that should not be an issue. There are some other, some information here that I provided, which was in your board packet, and we went through it last time. I really wasn't going to go and spend a lot of time on these, unless anybody saw anything that you have questions on. These are, this particular slide happens to be the one for the high schools, what we're allocating for them for next year, and it's based on the number of students that they have, so much per kiddo, and we have a, the same allocation, a different allocation for the middle school, but we fund it the same way, so many students, so much money per kid, that's how much they get to spend, and the same thing for the elementary schools, different dollar, different dollar amount. But if any of you all have any questions about any of these, again, I know it's laid out a little bit differently than it was in your board book, but all the questions, all the information is there, or if you would like to visit with Dr. Montoya, if you have a question that you see afterwards, please feel free to do so, and we'll get you an answer as to what the budgets are that they're requesting. We did go back since the last time and visit with a couple more of these departments, and visit, talk to them about reducing some of their budgets a little bit more, and they're the bigger departments, like the maintenance department, and the transportation department, where, and things like where the fuel budget, where we have traditionally forecasted gallons of, gallons of fuel needed times a higher cost per gallon, and because we have had kind of prices stabilize a little bit, we're able to take a little bit of money from those budgets, and they do add up when you start taking $200,000 here and $100,000 there, so we did do that, and hopefully we don't have to come back and do anything with that. But there was, when we were talking earlier about the, I'm going to go through this real quick here, through the ones for the early colleges, and I don't really know if I want to continue to talk about that too much, but you can see here, we, we did increase this one, that's the only reason I'm bringing, coming back to it. Second, from the bottom there, last time we presented this, when we went back to do the student projections and the tuition costs for the, all the student class, the sizes, we had put a number in there based on what we thought it was going to be, and when we went back to look to see how many kids were actually enrolling, then we had to up that budget, so it's 676,000 just for the early college high school program, that does not include the other costs that we already give JECCA for their normal operations. This is mostly to pay for all the tuition and for some of the books, and there's also another line item for books for JECCA as well. And keep in mind that these early college high schools, this is only the second year, so we have some freshmen and a few sophomores. It's going to continue to grow as we get the juniors and the seniors coming in, so that price tag is going to continue to, to blow up as we go forward. And that STEM, that T-STEM program, it's, that $485,000, it's a little bit of that a startup, so that price will go, on that particular one, it will go down a little bit as we move forward, because they're going to buy all their equipment and everything the first few years, and then once they have that, it shouldn't be as expensive to operate. Does anybody have any questions on any of these that you all saw? And if not, I'm going to just go right through them. Okay. And that's it, that's the presentation for tonight, and really, really need your guidance through Dr. Montoya about some of the other items. If not, if you don't feel like you would like to do that, we did try to be as flexible as possible with the agenda language that we put on the meeting for Monday, so the board has the ability to vote on different things, and of course, make amendments of those items as necessary as to what items we should include and not include in the budget for, for next year. Thank you all very much.
Let me see, what am I supposed to do? No, no, I think it's there, right? Yeah. I'm going to proceed to item number four, discussion consideration of action items. Consider and take poss, oh, I'm sorry, item three.
Three A.
Consider, three A, consider and take action regarding approving update to FFA Local Student Welfare Wellness and Health Services, second reading. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. Macias, second. Ms. Canoyer?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Are there any changes that we, I mean, I know there's changes, but is there anything that Mr. Gonzalez would like to tell us?
Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd like to kind of explain that one, and...
Yes, this is just an update to our school health advisory committee, and just some changes to our wellness plan. It's a, it's a response to the Healthy Hunger Free Act of 2010.
No, no, no. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. We'll move on to item four, and actually, we'll take it into closed session. Consider and take possible action regarding approving personnel report and updates, including new hires, resignations, and administrative appointments pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. The board will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following, 551.074, discussing personnel or to hear complaints against personnel. No final action, decision, or vote shall be taken while the board is in closed session, and the time is 8:01.